Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. We'll start with a prayer. God help us to do our very best this day, not by worrying about whether we are right, but by doing what is right as we deliberate here regarding the business of the city. Protect our citizens, watch over our first responders as they serve and protect us, and extend your hand over all our other employees as they do their work in service to our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Mill.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
And Mayor Clock.
Here.
We have nine present and zero absent.
Thank you. Do you have some announcements?
Yes. View on the agenda: All city offices will be closed Friday, April 19th, in observance of Good Friday. Yard waste collection has begun, and collection is the same day as your regular trash day. Yard waste materials must be in paper yard waste bags or in 35-gallon or smaller garbage cans, not weighing more than 50 pounds, and have a yard waste sticker affixed to the front of the can. Stickers are available at the city clerk's office. City Council will conduct a committee of the whole session on Friday, May 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. at the Saginaw Community Action Center located at 2824 Perkins for the purpose of hearing presentations regarding marijuana facilities and related matters. We have a couple proclamations on the agenda. The first is declaring April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day.
And today, the proclamation will be read by Councilmember Autumn Scherzer. Do we have anyone here for the Arbor Day presentation? Please step up.
I'm trying to hide him back.
You can't get away.
I see. I see.
City of Saginaw proclamation: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood, for our homes and for our fires; trees also increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. The City of Saginaw would like to recognize Trees for the Tri-Cities that was established in 2008, and since its inception, has planted over 682 trees in various locations throughout the City of Saginaw. And whereas trees provide numerous aesthetics and economic benefits, in which Trees for the Tri-Cities has made a significant investment to the community by purchasing, planting, watering, and nurturing trees in the City of Saginaw to improve the quality of life for city residents; and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, Trees for the Tri-Cities has collaborated with the City of Saginaw and committed to monitoring trees and replacing trees that were lost in various locations within the city. In 2018, the City of Saginaw Streets Section of the Right-of-Way Division also pruned 521 trees and removed 262 trees. Now therefore be it resolved, I Floyd Clock, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Saginaw, and invite citizens to join us for a Green Team event in observance of this day in the council chambers of City Hall on April 30, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 15th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2019. Signed Floyd Clock, Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Mill, Bill Ostache, and Autumn L. Scherzer, with Timothy Morales, City Manager.
We will present that.
All time, we'll see. Thanks. Keep up the good work. Please say two, man.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you. All that you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You have a few words? We'd be happy to hear them.
Oh, yeah. My committee wouldn't let me go back to the meeting if I didn't say something. So, first off, I just want to thank the council for this proclamation. Our committee works very hard to try to make things like this happen, so we just want to personally thank you for the proclamation that Councilwoman Scherzer has just read. I'd like to take a personal note to thank Councilwoman Scherzer because she participated in our Christmas door celebration back in December, where we had the city employees in City Hall and a couple other places where they decorated their door using just recycled material, and the theme was, I believe it was Christmas stories. And anyway, it's a very amazing event because we can't use anything new at all. We've had instances where people have made their own paper. They're doing this all in their own time. I don't want anybody, you know, they're doing it all in their own time, and they're, as Councilwoman Scherzer could attest to, the creativity is just amazing. We are the Green Team. My name is, I'm sorry, my name is Tyrone E. Harge. I am a city resident. I worked for the Saginaw Fire Department for 27 years. Shout out to my chief back there. And I am just a proud citizen of the City of Saginaw. Our members are the same. We have members whose goal is to increase the commitment and awareness to reuse, reduce, and recycling of the products in your home. We've been doing this for over 10 years now. This will be our 10th-year Green Team event. We're all city employees. Everybody's a city employee. I'm the only retiree so far. We have been active for over 10 years promoting educational communication and interaction with the public, which includes celebrating Arbor, which includes celebrating Arbor Day, thus the proclamation. Our motto is to educate to motivate. And actually, you know, to keep it short, we're just trying to be one of the many positive influences in the City of Saginaw. That's really our whole main goal for this. On behalf of the committee, I want to personally invite you to our Gold Green Celebration, as Councilwoman Scherzer has stated. And that's going to be on Tuesday, April 30, 2019, right here in the City Council Chambers from 11:00 o'clock to 1:00. We're going to have different vendors coming in to teach you about certain things about recycling in the city, certain areas that you may not have thought about. We have Irish Waste Diversion. We're going to have the Saginaw Mosquito Treatment Commission. We're working on getting someone from Consumers Energy to talk about solar energy. We're also going to have a rain barrel set up, and we're going to have a Saginaw Water Quality Presentation by Mr. Amanda Keel, who's part of our committee at the Water Department. We're going to be giving away tomatoes and pine trees. We're going to have seed and plant sharing, so if you have a plant that you wish to share, by all means bring it, and we will definitely trade with you. And we're going to try to have that going on that day. So, refreshments will be provided. It probably won't be your lunch, but it will be something. We will have something here for you to eat. I just want to announce my committee, who work diligently hard every year for this event. First, I want to start off with Jamie Verch, I want Max Shucknick, who's timing me right now, he's making sure that I get out of here in time, Michelle O'Day, Tracy LaFever, Heather Howe. We also have Jean Tafer and Amanda Keel, who have been with us since the beginning. And like I said, we've been doing this for over 10 years now, and I just want to give a shout out to them. I want to give a special shout out, though, to Linda Ametrot, who, she's going to be retiring this year. And she has been with us since the beginning, and she has just been an amazing, amazing person to work with. Our committee, we always say our committee is the best committee ever. So, we just wanted to just thank, and I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to her, because she's going to be retiring in the months, in the future months, and so this may be her last time doing the Gold Green Celebration. And I just wanted to just make sure that I acknowledge her and let her know how much I appreciate her. And with that, that ends any presentation I have. Go Saginaw.
Mr. Harge, thank you. Thank you so much for all you did. Madam Clerk?
Okay, our next proclamation is to the Saginaw Bar Association declaring May 1, 2019, as Law Day.
And it would be my privilege to read this proclamation, if you'll step up, Mr. Straka. City of Saginaw proclamation: Whereas Law Day is an occasion of public acknowledgement of our nation's heritage of justice, liberty, and equality under the law; and whereas Congress issued a joint resolution in 1961 declaring May 1 as Law Day, which is a national holiday to recognize and celebrate our justice system and the rule of law; and whereas Law Day allows all citizens to recognize and honor the contributions of the lawyers, judges, and law enforcement agencies, and individuals in our community for the responsibilities they bear to the commitment of the rule of law; and whereas the American Bar Association has designated the 2019 Law Day theme to be, quote, "free speech, free press, free society," close quote, in recognition of the numerous contributions the Fourteenth Amendment has made to American law and society; and whereas the Fourteenth Amendment constitutionally defined national citizenship for the first time and guaranteed that the privileges or immunities of United States citizenship would not be denied to any individual; and whereas the Fourteenth Amendment has served as the basis of and inspiration for landmark civil rights legislation and court decisions protecting and advancing the rights of Americans; and whereas promoting public understanding of the roots of our freedom are an important component in the civic education of the citizens of the City of Saginaw; and whereas on Law Day, May 1, 2019, let us recommit to building a future rooted in the rule of law, in which our laws apply equally to everyone, and future generations will know a fair and just world. Now therefore be it resolved, I Floyd Clock, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, to hereby proclaim May 1, 2019, as Law Day in the City of Saginaw, and call upon the people of the City of Saginaw to acknowledge the importance of our legal and judicial systems with appropriate ceremonies and activities in support of this observance. I further encourage schools, businesses, media, religious institutions, civic and service organizations to join members of the bar and bench in commemorating Law Day. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 15th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2019. Signed Floyd Clock, Mayor, councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, Jamie Forbes, John Mill, Bill Ostache, and Autumn L. Scherzer, and Timothy Morales, City Manager. Mr. Straka? Thank you. It's my privilege to explain this to you and the bar. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you have a few words? We'd be happy to hear them.
I do. I'll try to keep it brief. First off, I want to apologize for being a little late. They had me over at juvenile court dealing with even more young people, and unfortunately, I hit every red light on the way here. I'm Dan Straka. I'm with the president of the Saginaw County Bar Association. I'm also a prosecutor who handles juvenile law, so Law Day is very important to me because the Law Day theme, while it is free speech, never quite works with our fact patterns. So this year, it was kind of anti-free speech because it was a prohibition on texting while driving, which I think is important for young people, especially someone who handles juvenile law. I can tell you, there's quite a few young people without driver's licenses driving around, especially in stolen cars in this county. And I think that's the important, good thing about Law Day is because we let the kids come into court, see not only how a criminal prosecution goes from the beginning of trial to the end, but also to teach them lessons like not texting while driving. We've had bullying cases in the past, animal cruelty, and I'll probably be working on something involving cell phones because they love making school threats with cell phones. I encourage you all to come to our Law Day celebration on May 1. As I said, the other component of Law Day is the mock trials. That was last month because it works better with the schools and their spring break. I'm happy to report that this year, we had one more school attend Law Day. We had 15. We're still missing one school from the city, but we got the other four high schools to attend. So that's always a pleasure to have all those students in the courthouse. But going back to May 1, that's at Trillium. Lieutenant McComb of the Michigan State Police will be speaking. I believe it'll be dealing with texting while driving and some other issues that we see with road safety. I encourage you all to come, especially you, Mayor Clock. The winner of the Liberty Bell this year, which is handed out at the Law Day meeting, is Kelly Scorsoni, who is the executive director of the Bar Association. And before anyone says anything about her getting it, because she's on the board, we all threatened to resign if she didn't take it, because she has worked very hard in not only helping with Law Day, but helping with the Bar Association hopefully get together with the community. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Straka. I agree, Kelly is an excellent speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go further, Madam Clerk, I do want to read something here for the audience. I want to remind everyone that this is a public meeting, and therefore we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, this is a good time, and this is important, to remind everyone, and perhaps especially those of us sitting up here, to please turn off or silence all electronic devices, along with the idea of not texting while driving. We don't want to be texting or phoning while up here, so. Thank you. We appreciate that.
What was that again about the cell phones?
Not.
Say, turn our cell phones off.
We had asked you to either silence or turn them off. Yes.
I can't do mine for a time because I take, you've got mine programmed for medicine. If I turn it off, the medicine will take the medicine. I'll try and keep it down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Madam Clerk?
We are now at public input.
All right. And I wish to give welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and your input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerks, so be sure to cover your main points. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-up will be referred to the city staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Mark Schwager.
Anybody in the audience know what this is? Anybody here, if you raise your hand if you know what it is? It's including the people up on council.
I'm afraid we can't see what it is, sir. If you'll just step up to the podium and give us your name and your address, please.
Mark Schwager, 1806 North Clinton Street, here in the City of Saginaw.
Go ahead.
I'm here to protest about housing code violations and stuff. This is an order to appear in court. I've had paid fines since then. My boy moved from Texas back to Saginaw. He moved into the house of the owner. Okay? Same with my grandbaby. They needed a place to stay, so I let him stay there. So I get penalized for allowing them to stay there. So I'm requesting that this code be eliminated or melted down. City Clerk knows what I'm referring to. Plus, I got $154 bill and 17 cents for a water bill for Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez. I asked the water bill supervisor at the time, how come they didn't take them people to court where you can take me to court for another stupid thing that's on the law? Says that the person who buys a house is responsible for all the bad things on it. Where does Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez come involved? Change those laws for us. This is a national defense ribbon. I served in the United States Army. I took an oath to serve and protect the citizens of this country. Every boom-boom box that goes by in the car is ruining the children's hearing, which is a federal offense, is a felony. We had animal cruelty, and that's also a felony. I am ordering everybody on council to execute the oath that you have taken. Eliminate it. Do something about it. Too bad that prosecuting attorney walked out the door, because I'm willing to go as far as to go after these people. The oath that I took to serve and protect, I will now try to stop them from playing their music. I'm going to go in front and count, I mean, that prosecuting attorney filed charges against them. Your guys' responsibilities are also the same. Everybody, you all took an oath to serve and protect. Remember, loud music does hurt children's hearing. If you see a little child out there, got their ears over their, hands over their ears, it's an indication that it is hurting them. Do something about it. I have done this since 1996. I've been sick for the last few years where I never came back from this council. I am here now. I'll give you guys approximately 30-some days, and I'll start executing. I have a grandbaby, and I'm not going to allow them people to hurt my hearing, and I'm not going to allow the City of Saginaw to hurt my grandbaby's hearing either. We have laws. They say it's a misdemeanor. It's child abuse in my eyes, guys. And I think you guys know it's child abuse. It's also cruel to the animals. Don't forget that they're hearing. Thank you.
Heard to the city manager, Mr. Schwager.
I already have. I've done it many times over. You're new here, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but I will do something about it.
Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Edna Webb.
Thank you. My name is Edna Webb. I live at 3259 Livingston Drive, Saginaw, Michigan. And I was on the zoning board for over 35 years, and I didn't reapply this year. I decided going on 74, I had something else to do. I submitted to the clerk's office today a package with a bunch of pictures in it. So, I went to the assessor's office to pull the tax roll. So you're going to have to follow the pictures. They're all in order, so if you get them out of order, you're out of luck. The first picture is the vacant lot at 3303 Livingston Drive, which is across from Nell Haley School, which is across from my house. And somehow or rather, some trashy residents decided to start throwing their trash in this lot. I called the city two weeks ago and advised them. I don't know whether they came out or not, didn't follow up on it, but it has part of a basketball court, basketball apparatus on it now. The second picture, two of them, is at M46 and Sheridan Road. This property is on the tax roll, caught up. I'm going to know, does the city know what a easement or a right-of-way is? I know the city mows this in the summertime for 30 years now, and I'm sick of looking at it. They don't pick up the trash. They mow it. Now, does the property owner own just in back of his fence line, or is he responsible for the right-of-way and easement too? Or is the city responsible? It's not for me to worry about, it's for you guys to. And his taxes are caught up. I'm so sick of this. This property here has the pictures with the house, the trees, and the car. It's at 2712 Hess. In 1998, this property was valued at, state assessment now, $32,000 some odd dollars in 1998, which is $64,000 with the state legalization. In 2018, this damn property with broken windows, has a business on it, Erdman Car Garage. These cars, I took these pictures on Friday. This property is valued at...
Ma'am? I have to...
Wait just a minute, sir. Can I finish my statement?
You...
This property is valued at $35,000. And I'll be here next time to do the rest of them, and I'll probably have many, many more. But you need to be accountable as residents, citizens, to the City of Saginaw, which used to be a beautiful city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker...
And three minutes is too short. Five minutes is long.
Our next speaker is Gregory Carter.
Carter?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Pro Tem, council, staff, my name is Greg Carter. I live at 233 Homestead Lane, Saginaw, Michigan. I'll try to be brief, but as some of you know, microphones have a mystical quality that sometimes make you speak longer than you actually want to. Reason for me appearing before you today, I'm the chairperson of Miles From Memory, 5K Fun Run Walk for Alzheimer's. This event, or this cause is very special to me, very personal to me, because my father was one of millions that lost his fight to this terrible disease back in 2011. Hence, Miles From Memory was born. The event itself is May 18 of this year, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We'll have the event at 1940 South Island Drive, which is the Buena Vista Lions Park. Registration is $20 per person, or $100 for a team of seven. I'm here today to invite the council to come out, celebrate this day with some of your constituents, and continue to raise awareness on this terrible disease. I brought some information for the event that I'd like to give to the clerk, if that's possible. I also left some downstairs. I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Addie for consenting to act as one of my memory advisors this year, and I look forward to seeing you Saturday, May 19, as well as most of the council, if not all of you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Brown Heinz.
My name is Erica Brown Heinz. I'm here on behalf of Wanna Gas Credit Union located at 1837 Bagley, here in the City of Saginaw. I'm excited to be here this evening to talk to you about a very valuable resource to the City of Saginaw and its residents, and that resource is membership with Wanna Gas Credit Union. Credit Union. For those of you who may not know the story behind the WanaGas name, simply just Saginaw spelled backwards. But what's unique about that to us is that our very name and who we are, it represents, and it represents the core of who it is that we actually serve. And it all started here, in Saginaw community, about sixty years ago. And you fast forward now, about sixty-six years or so, we still continue to serve this community and its residents, but we've expanded to include the entire lower peninsula of Michigan. Not to toot our own horn, but I actually am here to toot our horn. In the last few years, we have been recognized as one of the best of the best credit unions and mortgage lenders in the Saginaw community, and we're proud of that title as we continue to serve the residents of the Saginaw community. And in one of the ways that we're specifically proud of serving the Saginaw community is with our products and services, specifically our mortgage program. We have a first-time home buyers program that offers residents the opportunity for homeownership with as little as three percent down, reduce closing costs, as well as rate reductions. In connection with that, we also participate in a federal grant program, which allows low-income households the opportunity to qualify for up to eight thousand dollars in assistance with closing costs, as well as down payments. So over the past few years, with the help of our staff and our officials, we've been able to provide over two million dollars to help residents recognize that dream of homeownership. Our commitment to the city extends beyond our offices. Our staff and our officials volunteer their time, their talents, and their resources to many local organizations, and just to name a few, United Way, Habitat for Humanity, One Week One Street, the Saginaw African Cultural Festival, Friends of Hoyt Park, the Underground Railroad, just to name a few. So we're committed to serving our members, growing our community, and helping our neighbors, especially those in need. And I could stand here all night and tell you how great I think this credit union is, but I'll leave you with this. We share success stories every week amongst the staff of people that we've been able to help, to give you real-life examples of the difference that the WanaGas resource provides. And you can check it out, those success stories, on our website under About Us, Member Success Stories, how we save people money to help improve their financial situation.
Thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Levante Carrington. I don't see Levante. We are now at remarks of council.
All right. And then we start with Councilmember Bryant.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just wanna say thank you to all our public speakers, for Mr. Schwager, and thank him for his service, and also let him know that we can't control the volume of the music, because if we could, man, my neighborhood would be a lot quieter, and the chief is smiling at me right now, because he knows I get to talk to him quite often. My neighbors know that I'm a council, and they would like to live in a very quiet neighborhood, but we can't always control that. But being a part of the Neighborhood Association helps, being active and visible, and we'll start light up the city in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully that can mitigate some of it, but I do, I have felt the influx in call volume to myself, just with the change in temperature. For a few days, we had some nice weather. I had the opportunity to stop to Greater Williams Temple, they have an after-school program, and it was really nice. I always love talking to kids of the city, and they had about forty kids there, and what was so cool is that they had so many good questions, from potholes to issues with taxes. They wanna know what's going on and what we're doing up here, Mr. Mayor. So it was, it was very good to participate in that. I know we have some friends at the HM Community Boy Garden, they've worked on a partnership with Greater Williams Temple, but if anybody would like to reach out to Sherrell, Carthan, and Dottery, I'll give you that information, because it's good just to go and talk to those kids, they need that. Also, I had the opportunity to attend Zeta Phi Beta Phi Womenhood Luncheon, where I received an award as an up-and-coming community trailblazer, so I wanted to thank them for that. It was a beautiful event, I had the opportunity to attend with my family. Also, I wanna give a shout-out to Mamie Thorns at Saginaw Valley State University, they have their tenth annual Great Lakes Bay Youth Leadership Institute Dinner, so I wanna give my kudos to them and all the students out there. Also, to Mr. Harge and, who was it? Damn, with the Saginaw Bar Association. So thank you to the work that each of those organizations do, in making our community a little bit better. And Beautification Day, I wanna give thanks to Nate Collison, my co-chair. I was ill with some food poisoning earlier this week, and I didn't have an opportunity to attend the planning session, but he did a great job. And thank you to Matt, who's in the back, worked on our Beautification Day video, and Vicky Davis and Rachel Heseska, they really, really help us out when it comes to Beautification Day, making sure that things get done and I stay organized. So just wanna say kudos to them. Our next planning session will be April twenty-third, and I think that's gonna be at the YMCA, but stay tuned to our Facebook page for more details, but we're just really getting excited. It's one of the busiest times of the year for me, as we try to coordinate these hundreds of volunteers and solicit donations. So if anybody on the council, I know you guys are gonna join us for this weekend event on May seventeenth and eighteenth, but if you can't make it, please send a designee, and there's also sponsorship availabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Forbes.
Good evening. I'd like to thank those that all came and gave their public input tonight. Lots of exciting things on the agenda, as Councilmember Bryant listed. I just wanna, just remind everyone that all of our neighbors can sign up for comment at our meetings, simply by calling the clerk's office by Monday noon-ish, at 989-759-1482, and just give your name, your address, and your topic, and anyone can speak to us. We'd love to hear from all of our neighbors about all of the things that impact our quality of life here in Saginaw, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ostas.
Ostas.
I'll get it right. One of these.
Ostas. Okay, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to city council. I see some new faces out there tonight, so it's nice to have new residents here. Couple of things I wanna mention is 2019 Saginaw Police Open House is coming up, so that was, it's been posted at our city website and on their Facebook page, so that's April twenty-seventh from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. over at the 612 Federal Avenue location. I wanna congratulate Councilman Bryant on his award, I saw everything that was posted, so congratulations, sir. Another thing that's coming up, too, I wanna make mention is the Jazz on Jefferson, they're gonna be having their event this year that's over fifteen years going strong, so mark your calendars. That will be June fifth, and that'll be from 5:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. So that's always a great event. I enjoy always attending that. Also, too, I saw out there, I wanna say congratulations to one of our police officers, he was nominated Police Officer of the Year, and that is to Terrence Moore. So congratulations to Officer Moore. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ostas. Councilmember Walts.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank all the speakers for coming here speaking this evening and bringing about their concerns to the city of Saginaw. I'm sure they will get taken care of, and the city manager will definitely respond to all of them. I would like to congratulate Councilman Bryant for his award, and I'd like to say something about all the other council people that work for nonprofits and things of that nature. Everybody here does something in the community more than just be here at the city council meetings. I know that the award that Councilman Bryant got, Mr. Swager is the president of the organization, or the Zetas. I know that Councilman Moore does more than anybody that I know of in the city of Saginaw. She's involved in so many different organizations, unbelievable, I can't even name them all. But when she get a chance, I'm sure she will do that for us. But I know that, you know, people here do a lot more than what we just see sitting here at these seats right here. Most of us have jobs that we gotta do, and we do volunteer work, too. One of the things I'm involved in with the WanaGas Credit Union is the board of directors, and it's good to see one of our people from the credit union come here and tell about what WanaGas has to offer. As a matter of fact, we're offering every city employee here, Thursday, they're having a raffle, a giveaway raffle, where we're gonna give away three bikes, just to get people to get out in the community and stay healthy by riding their bicycles. That'll be eleven o'clock here at the city hall, and I'm sure the, the, the people that's supposed to be handling that will be handling it. I think it'll be right here, right here. But we always trying to do things in the community to make Saginaw a better place. As a matter of fact, my Neighborhood Association, we'll be cleaning up one of these lots over here in that neighborhood coming up in the next week or so. We have a little park that's back there, too, and hopefully the city be coming over there to cut those weeds down for us, so we can make that park a better place for the kids in our neighborhood. So there's so many things that we do. And the only reason why we do it, because we like serving the city of Saginaw and the citizens to make this a better place for everybody. Been involved in Big Brothers and Sisters program myself for thirty years, and seeing the joy that comes out when a little kid is doing better, and see him grow up and be a productive member of society is a beautiful thing. One of my little brothers, he's even employed at the WanaGas Credit Union as a part-time person. Now he's going to college full-time, and he just bought another car today. He made sure he called me and let me know that he bought a new car. So hopefully, we financed it for him, too. But, you know, I'm just elated just knowing about what this city council does and how the people stay involved in the community, and keep up the good work, I'm proud of all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Councilmember Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of annual reminders I like to make. Last couple of weeks to get your city income tax in. If you're receiving a refund, check that little box at the bottom and send some of that refund to Saginaw Fireworks. It's the easiest way to do it, and it is a big help to them. They, they have continued to put on a first-class fireworks display in this town, and we all get out and see that, and we hear the people from out of town who come in for that great event. Easy way to, to make a contribution to that. I wanted to echo Mr. Ostas about the Police Officer of the Year, Terrence Moore. He was presented to us at the Saginaw Exchange Club. They, as one of their community activities, honor the Police Officer or Law Enforcement Officer of the Year from numerous agencies for Saginaw County, including our partners in the FBI are part of that honor. So we'll be hearing more about that later. I have one reminder, another seasonal one. Last chance to help stuff Easter eggs for the big Easter egg hunt at the county courthouse is tomorrow night, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Little Jake's Restaurant over on the corner of Hamilton and Court. And it'll be the tail end of the twenty-seven thousand eggs they stuff, so hopefully, most of them are done already. And I have one other community event to mention. Saginaw Spirit is entering the conference finals for the first time ever. They have won two series. The Spirit is filling up the arena every chance they get. Their last chance to fill it this week was stolen, because they won in Sault Ste. Marie last night. So the playoffs will continue this week with the conference finals, either Guelph or London. If it's Guelph, it starts here, and if it's London, we'll be starting there. So go Spirit.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome everyone to council meeting, and thank you for all of our speakers. I can mirror what the rest of council said, that we appreciate your input and what you have shared, and we know that the city will get back to you. Again, there's something about those beautiful women in Zeta. I am the president of it, but not only did Councilman Bryant get a trailblazer, up-and-coming trailblazer award, but Brenda Moore received a Community Service Impact Award, so we appreciate and love you for all that you do. I wanna also thank the Green Team for all that they do with the Going Green campaign and all of the events that they're doing, and for continuing to educate and motivate all of us to stay green and clean. I'm also the chairman of the Diaper Alliance, and I just wanna note that if you don't know what the Diaper Alliance is, I highly suggest that you look them up. It's a nonprofit organization in the Great Lakes Bay region that provides over sixty-five thousand diapers to families in need, and we just received a truckload, which is over five-hundred thousand diapers, for families. And Saginaw is the largest distributor, we distribute the most diapers to the Saginaw community, so please look them up, get involved, volunteer, they're always looking for some help, and I'll definitely be there with you to help you repackage the diapers. I think that's it. Yep, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Moore.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of our public speakers for speaking. As my fellow, my fellow councilpeople indicated, some of them will get back with you as soon as possible, I hope. Ms. Edna, you are not the only one with the garbage. I spoke about that this morning. It is starting to be atrocious, and we, as citizens, we need to start taking pride in our neighbor. Some things the city can do, some things they can't, so we might have to get out and all start, I'm willing to get out and pick it up. Okay? This week has been a busy, busy, hectic week. I went on Thursday, I went to Saginaw Valley, and there were forty-two, I think, young people from this tri-county area who got honored. It was a phenomenal affair at Saginaw Valley. It was phenomenal. And to see young people get scholarships, and all they had to do was come once a month and be involved in that program at Valley. It was really phenomenal. Also, on Saturday, I had the opportunity, and I was blessed, again, to get honored by the Zeta, I'm a messed-up Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, and I got the Community Impact Award. My family is now saying, we don't know if we can come to all of your functions, because you have them too frequently. So, but, you know what? My slogan is, let the work I do speak for me.
That's right.
If we all, if we all just let the work we do speak for us, that means a whole lot to the community. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to pitch it for the mayor, and I was so thankful, I went to her eightieth birthday party. And I mean, you couldn't tell she was eighty years old, because she was dropping like it was hot. When the music started playing, I thought I danced. That lady danced me under the rug. So I'd like to do a shout-out to Ms. Lucille. Happy birthday, Ms. Lucille. And basically, Mr. Walts, the committees that I sit on are all the ones that mean a lot to me. And if you love your city, you do what you gotta do.
That's right.
So at this point in the game, I'm gonna keep doing it until I come to what they say, I'm gonna shop, but I'm gonna work till I drop. Not literally, but I'm gonna work till I drop. Thank you so much.
And Councilmember Bench.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I do wanna thank our public speakers for bringing their issues forward to us. As others have said, you know, our staff works as hard as they possibly can to come to some sort of positive resolution when those issues are brought forward, but unfortunately, we are frustrated by loud music and noise and, you know, unregistered rentals, as our citizens are. So we certainly empathize. And I just want to reiterate the date and time for the Miles From Memory Walk, or Fun Run, it'll be a walk, but that's May eighteenth from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And I would greatly appreciate any support as an ambassador. Mr. Carter approached me, and I certainly had to say yes, because it is an issue that is also very dear to me and, you know, personal. Both of my grandparents suffered from Alzheimer's, and it is a painful experience that I wouldn't wish on someone that I hated. And it's something that I think we've made so many strides in, that, you know, we're just around the corner from, from a cure or something that's going to stop the disease in its tracks. So I follow the progress and research on it. So it's very important to me, when we have an opportunity to raise funds for a cause like that, that we support it and do what we can, because it may be us, one day, that benefits from that. So just get ahold of me, and you guys know how to contact me if you guys are interested in forming a team or just making a contribution, but I look forward to your support. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I will try and be brief. I do wanna thank you, Mayor Protem, for hip-pen sitting for me the other day, it was appreciated. Regarding the other comments by councilors, I appreciate them, but I won't repeat them, and thank you, and I do second their comments as well. I do wanna say, cover a couple of things. Ms. Webb, please understand, though, that we don't own a lot of those properties, and it's very difficult sometimes... it's very difficult sometimes even to find the owner. We will, we are inundated in the last few years with people dumping throughout the city, and it is a problem. We recognize, no, you can't talk. We recognize that.
I was talking about the problem.
Ma'am, I understand. We recognize that all of this is a problem, and we appreciate your concern for the city because we do want it to be a beautiful city. It is important to everyone up here that we improve the appearance of our city. We will do everything we can when we can, and we are strapped for cash, and that's where it brings me to the next item, and that is our two-nineteen May budget meeting schedule. The budget is a very significant issue for us, and it's one of the most important things this council does. The problem, as you may not know, but we know very well, is that that budget is shrinking every single year. It's shrinking both because of the tax caps that we face and because of what the state is doing in balancing its budget on the backs of the communities, the cities, the counties, villages. We are hurting every year, and we are losing more and more dollars, both to inflation and to the state's actions. Both of them, though, have harmed us significantly in our ability to provide those services that you're asking us to provide. We wish to be able to do all of what you're asking, but we cannot do it with the funds we have. We will do everything we can to make the city better, to make it a more beautiful city, and to try and improve the services to our citizens, but we can only do so much with the money we have. That budget meeting, remind everyone again, is a four-thirty Committee of the Whole on May sixth, six-thirty PM regular meeting on May sixth following the Committee of the Whole that day. And on May twentieth at six-thirty PM, we will again be considering the committee, the budget. Anyone who questions the ability of our city to provide all the services that we used to have needs to review that budget. That budget is slimmer and slimmer every year. If you have questions, we can just contact staff. They'll try and answer those questions for you. But the budget is not there to provide the services that were there twenty or even thirty or even ten years ago. Please review it. It's public, and it's on the website. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports from manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, and just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is the Neighborhood Association Action Group meeting. Council chamber is at noon. And one of the topics for the meeting tomorrow will be the Light Up the City update from Dr. Petros. So, if you're interested in that, it'll be a good opportunity to hear about that annual summer activity. Wanted to also let council know that we had, I think the last meeting I mentioned that with the AT&amp;T Michigan President, this last week, had an opportunity to meet with the CEO for Consumers Energy. Patty Poppy had a business roundtable at Nexteer that was coordinated by Nexteer and Joy and Crary in the chamber. So, it's a good opportunity for a lot of business leaders in Saginaw to talk with the CEO of Consumers Energy and let her know some of the issues that we're having here and where we're trying to go. It was a good opportunity to talk about connected and automated vehicles. It's a big product line for Nexteer as well, and the city, as a city, you remember from the Center for Automotive Studies, our Center for Automotive Research study that we worked on with Nexteer and Saginaw Future in the chamber, that that's a goal that we have is creating a potential testing environment for Nexteer in the city. So, however consumers could help us with that, we wanted to bring that to her attention. And we did learn that Consumers has about a ten million dollars allocated to electric vehicle enhancements, so that's an opportunity for us to do something in that area. There is a lot going on at the police department. A council member mentioned the Open House, which is Saturday, twenty-seventh, from one to three. The SWAT team is going to be there. You have a chance to meet them. The community police officers will be available there. The K-9 officers will be there, so everyone can meet them. They'll also be giving tours of the department and also have an opportunity to learn about employment with the Saginaw Police Department. The Saginaw Community Youth Protection Council will be attending, and also Family Against Narcotics Team. So, a lot of opportunities to meet your officers and different support teams. Congratulations also to Officer Jordan Engelhardt. He was selected as the April Officer of the Month. And reminder that the annual police awards and memorial ceremony will be Thursday, May ninth, at ten AM, and that's at the Temple Theater Ballroom again. Mayor did mention the budget shrinking. At a third way, it's shrinking. Our total budget has remained pretty stable. However, the dollars available for operating have decreased because of the pension costs and healthcare costs that eat away of that as well. That's probably our biggest driver. If you look at our revenue, we have, I think, been improving on income taxes. We've had a lot of business investment in the city. If you look at that, it's been increasing. We've also, we have seen increases in revenue sharing in the past eight years. We'll see what the next budget has, but we did get close to where we were from where it was cut. But again, that was about a one-point-eight-million-dollar cut. We've gained that back, but then we probably would have been far ahead of that if the cuts weren't initially made. But each year, we do see pretty significant increases in pension, and we did a lot of work on reducing retiree healthcare costs, but as we set that level, we know it's going to increase each year as well. So, we will be having the budget meetings. Council members did get email from Vicky Davis on our schedule. And finally, I did want to give council an update that I received from the clerk about some of our permitting that we've had in the city since you get contacted a lot. Twenty-nineteen non-owner occupied renewals, we had five thousand eight-hundred-and-eighteen mailed. We had four thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-three returned and paid on time. That's an on-time payment return. Twenty-nineteen unoccupied rentals, we had five hundred and sixty-eight mailed, four hundred and seventy-nine returned and paid. That's eighty-four percent. So, that is a very good return. Just to give you an idea, rubbish bills, a return on time payment is probably less than fifty percent. So, this is an excellent, excellent job that they've done and the whole team on doing that, and I think it also shows that we really are not receiving that many issues for non-owner occupied and unoccupied rentals. Finally, the general business licenses for twenty-nineteen are at one thousand two-hundred-and-eighteen. That's an increase of two-hundred-and-twenty-two from the previous year. So, it shows good growth, I think, in businesses in the city as well. It seems like every meeting, we do have a citizen come to talk about a new nonprofit or service that they're doing in the city. We have a group that is working on a project at Garber Tennis Courts that I think is pretty phenomenal. It's a shockingly large project, so I wanted to give them an opportunity to talk about it, the meeting tonight. So, Ken, who is leading up the group, is here. So, I invite Ken up to the podium to give you an update on what they're working on at Garber Courts.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Clark and councilmembers. My name is Ken LaCuro, and this is Farrington Douglas, and we're the founders of the Urban Youth Tennis Foundation. And we're gonna tag-team a little bit here, and we know time constraints are important. But, and I have this in control, so if he talks too much, I'll cut him off. But in this short presentation, we're going to, one, tell you a brief history about us, because many of you probably don't know too much about us. Two, we're gonna show you some pictures, and pictures are worth a thousand words. They will tell our story. And then, thirdly, most importantly, we're gonna present what the near future holds for Garber Courts and the significant investment that we're embarking upon. We'll keep our history and program short. There's a lot here. We could go on for hours, but I'm gonna read a little bit to keep me on track, because I've been known to go on, and just tell you a little bit about our background. We're a community-supported program with a mission to reach and mentor city youth using tennis as a tool with love and encouragement to promote character development, a healthy, lifelong sport, and provide opportunities to participate in team competition, where tennis can be used to remove barriers and provide exciting new opportunities for life. We started in two thousand and six, formed a five oh one C three charitable organization. Oh, there is a pointer. Whoops. Ma'am.
Shit.
Okay. They only gave me a second instruction, but anyway. We began our first program in the winter at the former Civitan Center, and we then took the program to the Garber Tennis Courts for summer camps, and we've had twelve summer camps so far. Each winter, we also went into various school gymnasiums through the city using special tennis, if you could pull those out there, Farrington, tennis rackets and balls and nets that are designed for youth. We can teach any youth tennis in an hour's time with the new techniques. Since then, we've worked with over six hundred kids, sometimes with as many as forty in a class, or weeks-long classes at Garber Courts. And an integral component after each session is our chalk-talk time, where we make them sit down and listen to a little spiel about character traits. For four years, we conducted an in-service training day for the ten city elementary phys ed teachers, teaching them our Quick Start techniques. And during that period, we estimate we reached over four thousand elementary kids with a district-approved tennis program before budget constraints pulled gym class from elementary schools. And as far as we know, there hasn't been enough money to continue that program. We also maintain, as you've heard, the Garber Tennis Court facility for the city. We put up the nets, take down the nets. We clean the courts and do what we can to help the city in their budget constraints. In two thousand and ten, we obtained a Dow grant and had fifty of their employee volunteers for a three-day blitz. And in that blitz, we powder washed the courts, filled literally two-inch-wide cracks that we were losing balls in, and painted the courts. We sited the storage hut and landscaped a little bit. At the time, we were given three to four years max on the fixes, and that was in two thousand and ten. So, more on that later, because that's really the big thing coming. In two thousand and seventeen, we did an engineering study we commissioned, and they concluded that the surface and the underlying base was too far deteriorated, and we needed a complete replacement. So, you're going to see the culmination of that. We've got a packet, and, well, before we go to that, Farrington, let's narrate through some pictures we have here, and maybe just to tell them what we did in each of these shots.
All right, so, we started out with the other pictures. We had the idea of wanting to encourage the kids to want to play tennis with us. And so, as we started at the Civitan Center, every Monday night for probably an entire year, with the exception of whatever holiday, we had the kids there. Many of the kids would walk from the neighborhood and come and participate, and then there were kids that would, parents would drop them off and et cetera. Okay, and this was one of our more successful summers, where we had just a host of volunteers. The kids came from various community centers. We worked closely with First Ward and just other kids. We did flyers throughout the schools and, yeah, so you can see Ken on the left side and I'm on the right. We had some posters developed that would help advertise. Here's some of the games that we would do for warm-up on the courts. And here, we, at the end of each session, which, they were six-week sessions, we would hand out certificates, basically just encouraging the kids to continue to just participate with us and to be, I guess, thankful that they completed the class, and we were appreciative of them. This is at the First Ward Cathedral District, where we would go there on Monday nights. We worked with Midland Community Tennis Center, and they would teach on the court with me, and we'd have probably three different sessions after school. And here, again, back at Garber Tennis Courts, you can see we have Sarge Harvey over there volunteering. He's with us tonight. Again, and after each session during the summer, we would have snacks, and then we'd also have a book read, where the kids would have to come back the next week. And basically, we would reward them with gift certificates or medallions or ribbons for being able to answer some of the questions that was a part of their homework assignment. And this young man here, Andrew Farrell, was one of the first kids that has gone on to play collegiate tennis through our program, and...
He received a very significant scholarship, and so we were proud of that.
Yeah, so he attends Tugalu College in Mississippi. Again, we had snacks and drinks after each class on Monday nights, and, yeah, that's okay. And here's one of our out, one of our trips, where we would, field trips, where we would take the kids to the Midland Community, to the big professional tournament. We had a special session where we would have one or two pros to come and speak with the kids, answer their questions. We got free ice cream and pizza, and they would acknowledge our group. We would, I think we even had a city bus or school bus that would take us at different times. We worked with the Y. The Y would also allow us to use their minibus. And again, volunteers helped us pull these things off. Also, at the end of each summer session, we'd have a pizza party, and we'd bring in different speakers. In this particular time, we had Brian Pruitt, Michael Webster. We've just had a various group of people to come and encourage the kids. They encourage us as well. Here was one of the cleanup days when Dow had, we were preparing for them to come and help us, and, again, one of the volunteers.
Yeah, actually, this one was one of the Riverfront Cleanup Days. This one, particular one. We'll show you a Dow shot next.
Okay.
There it goes.
Okay, and here's where Dow had afforded us the opportunity to have the courts resurfaced. And so, this was one of the workers for the company that, actually, I think was from Lansing. We had, here's one of the days where Dow was participating with us, and I think we had fifty volunteers, and we did landscaping, we redid the HUD, we had mulch, we had maybe one or two trees cut down. Of course, we had to add trees, you know, because we've cut down one. Okay, and so, just to see the site metamorphosize is just a wonderful opportunity to be a part of, and one of the final signs, and I think Ken wants to wrap it up here.
Is that the wrap? Anyway, at nineteen forty-nine, when the underlayment was placed there and it's really seen its day, and so what we're going to do, oh, I don't want to show you that now yet. That's good. We have a packet for each of you that, the top page in there is the next slide, and it's a flyer that talks about what we have in the works. This, it might be helpful. Will they be able to look at it?
Do you want them to flip through it now?
Yes, they could. It would really be helpful, because we're gonna walk through some highlights of what this, it's about a million-dollar project that we have cooking, and I'll just walk through it. The first page is the important one, flyer showing, and I'll just walk through a couple of highlights, basically so the audience can see this is what we have in the works. The new facility will generate some significant economic impact because we're designing this for sanctioned tournaments. We note that there are eight pickleball courts and eight tennis courts. The pickleball people have risen up en masse across the country, and when they heard about what we had in the works, they descended upon us and said, "You have to put in pickleball."
You have to put in eight, so they can, we can host some national tournaments.
Yeah. The nice thing about pickleball is it's going to expand the usage, and it brings in a whole different demographic. It's a different age group, and we're kind of excited that it's gonna bring in normally a little bit older crowd. This will include, if you can't, I don't know if you can see here, but we're going to put in a new building, pavilion with bathrooms and a little meeting area so in inclement weather, we've got a place to hide the kids. We used to have to rush them over to the Y across the street during bad weather. One of the other things we're excited about is this facility will allow us to, and we're going to sit with Arthur Hill, SASSA, and Saginaw High, they struggle to field a team themselves. And so we had conversations with them to have a city high school team that can compete with the, all the leagues. And they're pretty pumped about it right now because this will be great for them. A few other highlights on there. I think that's, I've got a lot more to say, but I think what we'll do is we'll stop there and maybe open it up for questions if you have any questions. We're available to go much more in-depth about the budget. This is a conceptual drawing. We have not done any construction drawings yet. Spence Brothers is going to be the lead construction manager. And I'll just leave it there, and maybe somebody, maybe you have questions, or you can defer to some other meeting.
Any questions, council members?
Another question by the comment. I'd like to thank you guys for what you're doing in the City of Saginaw with the youth. Douglas, I've been knowing you for a long time, and it's, and it's good to see you come back to Saginaw and help out our youth, man. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Mill?
Yes, hi. Would it be envisioned that if this proceeded to construction, we're on city-owned property, I assume?
Yes.
Are the contracts then let through the city? Is this a collaboration then? We would be receiving a donation for construction? How is this working?
Later on, in the, in your proceedings, there will be a renewal of our lease agreement that we have. And in that lease agreement, we have been given authority in the past to do renovations. So we will be doing all the contractual work. Part of the reason for that is we're going to get an awful lot of in-kind, and we can, with our advisory groups, we can lean on a lot of corporations.
Sure.
And squeeze them a little bit.
Quite familiar with how that works, but it can, council. Thank you.
All right. Councilman, Mayor Potemore?
I just have a question. I love the children, but some of us want to know how to play tennis, too. I love the children. So is there going to be anything?
Yes.
For the young children, and I don't need y'all laughing in there.
You'll know that. We started out, we started out as the Urban Youth Tennis Foundation. That was our main premise. Now, we have changed the name. We kept the Urban Youth Tennis Foundation as a DBA, but we changed it to Urban Tennis Foundation because we started teaching adults, and we didn't want them to be scared when they saw the word "youth" in there.
No, so you need to get us a schedule for us.
We'll do that.
Be surprised at how we might want to get out there and run a little bit, jump a little bit, and I like dancing, so.
Health court for you.
I'm going to the health court, too.
I just want to add to what Councilman Bowles says that the last council meeting, we had a discussion or a presentation about the sports, I don't know the exact name.
Sports court.
Sports court. So I just want to thank you for continuing to invest into that area, and it's that small-scale infrastructure like what you're doing with tennis courts, it's just makes Saginaw much more attractive, so thank you.
Thank you. We want to, we want to bring more excitement back to the city. Right now, there are over 250 people playing pickleball at the Freeland Sports Zone, and we want to bring those people to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Councilmember Forbes.
I'm so excited about this. I think that really does complement the existing things that are down there. I mean, this, this upgrade is really going to make just a huge difference. This area is just spectacular already, and this is just going to take it to another level. Can I ask a silly question? What, can you tell us what pickleball is and why it's different than tennis?
Pickleball is a cross between badminton tennis and ping pong, I guess. It's on, those two little courts. And you use a paddle and a, almost like a wiffle ball. Very, it's a lot of fun. It's very social. You're going to see when these are built, we're going to have to put a lot of picnic tables around because you're going to get people hanging out and just mingling, and it's a social activity. And it appeals mostly to 40-plus, but.
I want to say tennis. I said tennis.
I just had a question. If you guys, and this would be a great, great enhancement of the existing facility, and there's a lot of history behind that facility. I had a chance to go to the annual meeting for, I believe it was the Chamber of Commerce, and they were giving a presentation, Dick Garber was giving a presentation about it, and he was just absolutely moved to, moved to tears. And it was his uncle who was talking about his father and grandfather, and, you know, they did not, they weren't the Garbers that we know now. They're a little less means and holes in their shoes, and it was just amazing to watch that interview. We got, we got some really good interviews on the city's YouTube channel, but I had never seen this one before, and it was, man, it was amazing. Just to, just to listen to this man, he had to be in his 80s, and he was just moved to tears, how that was one of their first contributions to the community and how they did not have, and he always wanted to make sure.
You must be referring to Ike Garber?
That's what it is.
Ike Garber, on these courts, played tennis with Theodore Redkey, the poet. And they both battled continuously way back then.
It's amazing. I'll try to find it, but I think it would warrant probably a lunch and learn at the castle, so just an idea.
He also was a player for the University of Miami, and he competed on a professional level with team members because he played on the team there, and so he was very good.
I'd like to learn more.
And we also plan to have some professional tournaments at this facility as well. The US, the United States Tennis Association is also going to participate with us, and so we're, we have a lot of details to work out, but that'll be some of the, also the revenue that we have.
We have an Olympic athlete from Saginaw that was born in Saginaw, Miss Williams.
Yes, in fact, we're going to work on this Serena Williams family a little bit.
Come on, get her here.
And that would be really nice to kick this off. We would really like to have a kickoff when this is done, to have her come and do an exhibition.
It's important.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, both of you, and to all of your group for coming today.
Appreciate it.
On that thing, I want a question for the ma-
The manager, question for the manager?
With all due respect to the mayor, when people come here to talk about the trash and the stuff that's in the neighborhood, it's only appropriate for them to come here and express themselves to the city council and to the city manager, and you got to get back with them and give her an answer, let her know if we can get that cleaned up or not. Due respect to you, Mr. Mayor, I don't like, as a city council person, I would not tell nobody the restraints on the budget and that we may not be able to get it cleaned because I guarantee you if, if that trash is blowing at the Garber Courts, we'll get it cleaned up. That trash that she was talking about is only a third mile away from where those tennis courts are, where some of that property is. And that stuff needs to be cleaned up. We don't want to have Miss Williams drive down here on her way to the tennis courts in a third mile away, we got trash all over the place. So, so the squeaky wheel is the one to get the oil around here. You come here, you express your concerns at the city council meeting, hopefully we will get to clean it up. I don't want to tell anybody that, about the budget. I don't, the budget is what it is. But if we need a new truck, if we need some tires on that truck, if we got one street that's bad, is really bad, we're going to get that street cleaned up, and we need to get that trash cleaned up just as well to have people come into the city. So I'm sure the city manager will say something to her to let her know that it's going to get cleaned up. I wouldn't expect to see her out there picking that trash up like I may be picking it up in my neighborhood, so we need to be more cognizant on how the people feel about getting trash picked up in these communities. So I just wanted to put that out there because I think it needs to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Anything else from anybody? All right. Madam Clerk, I think we're, Mr. Peck concludes the management update.
We are now at the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel 191. Is, if there are any exceptions, any items, then we would ask for a motion.
Some move.
Leaving room for exceptions.
Support.
Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Next?
Our next item is board commission and committee report.
Are there any reports from city boards or commissions? Any reports? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
We are at ordinance introduction, and we have one on the agenda tonight. It's to amend section 12.039 Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission of Chapter 12, Boards and Commissions of Title I Administrative Code.
And we need a motion to introduce?
Some move. Support.
It has been moved and supported. Are there any, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The ordinance is laid over under the charter provision. Madam Clerk?
We are now at resolutions. Our first is to amend the City of Saginaw's Freedom of Information Act policy.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Our second is to recognize the Saginaw Depot Preservation as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Some move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of points I'd like to make about this. I'm going to start first with a question for our city attorney. In the, in this particular type of resolution where the requister needs this resolution to present to the state to obtain this license, is the city's position, if they qualify to the state, we shall issue this resolution? Is there leeway for us to exhibit our thoughts on this, or is it kind of like some zoning cases where if they qualify properly and they present it properly to the Zoning Board of Appeals, they shall approve it? What is our position in this?
It would be the latter approach. We, we review it internally, and it's presented to council only as a review as to whether or not they are qualified to seek this application with the state. It's, it's not, we don't, there's no room built into the statute as to whether or not you support the raffle or the effort or whatever. It's really strictly a review of whether or not they qualify as the particular type of organization that can seek this charitable gaming license.
Okay. Well, that, that will inform the rest of my discussion on it. I was interested to delay approval of this particular resolution due to some concerns about the organization asking for it, not the particular event they might be hosting or wanting to host. I will state that it seems rather open-ended, but I understand that is what the state looks at, is the actual timing of an event or type of charitable gaming they will allow. That's not a city function.
Correct.
So I would, I guess at this point then, maybe ask the manager if we could reach out to this group. I understand they have new leadership, and they are getting more active than maybe five years ago, but I'm going to kind of compare them to the action on the Lee Mansion, which through the efforts of the city and the, and community members and a willing developer, action has occurred there. I, I find that over a period of time, not enough action has occurred with the Depot Preservation Group. If this resolution will assist them in achieving their goals, that would be useful. But I, I think they have perhaps missed opportunities. To use as an example, the presentation we just had, they have engaged other community partners, Saginaw Community Foundation, Wicks Foundation, in working to achieve their goal. I don't find that the Depot Preservation Corporation has worked a lot with other groups in the community. And we're looking at a big project over there. So I, I hope they will use this as a springboard to really get that project going. So I guess that's my comment on it, considering where we stand legally.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Our third resolution is authorization to seek fiscal year 2022 local bridge program funds from the Michigan Department of Transportation.
We need a motion to adopt?
Some move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
Our next resolution is for the decertification vacation of ESOP Street from the Act 51 report.
Need a motion to adopt?
Some move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion? Councilmember Bowles?
What is this Act 51? I looked it up, and I've seen two different things, and I want to be sure what it is.
Well, let Phil Carwatt explain.
So Act 51, that is the public act that governs for cities, villages, counties, how we receive our funding, and then all the rules and regulations that we have to follow on how to spend it and how to report to spending on it. So that's what Public Act 51, I believe, 1951 is. So that's what that act is, and then what happens is, is as we decertify or vacate streets and roads before they, so every, the City of Saginaw, in our engineering division, we have to keep a map of the city with certified miles of street because that's how we receive our funding. The funding formula is based on population and miles and stuff like that, so when, when we're decertifying or certifying roads, we have to have a resolution approved by the board that the state, we have to then get to the state in order for them to amend the official map of the City of Saginaw.
So we're going to get rid of that street? That's what you're saying?
No, no, you don't necessarily get rid of it. I can't go, I couldn't go into details without reading them all, but you know, as people come up, or residents, or somebody, or, you know, somebody might want to close a street. MCVI, for instance, years ago, closed a portion of Water Street to, to build MCVI, and they had to go through the process to vacate the street. They truly removed the road, but we do have several blocks of streets within the City of Saginaw, I believe, that may have potentially been vacated but aren't necessarily removed. They're still there physically, but for whatever reasons, but the main purpose, I think, for somebody to vacate a street would be to build something or, you know, do something else. So this is just going back in and cleaning up, you know, the, you know, hopefully in the future, and I don't know if it makes sense, but when we bring these in front of you to have them vacated or not because they have to receive your approval, we may be able to bring the resolution at that time, but you, you may not necessarily approve that, so I think it makes sense to continue to have you either approve or disapprove of street vacation and then follow it with the resolution authorizing it. So that's what these are. Or a street renaming?
These have already been-
Approved by council. This is just cleaning it up with the resolution to get to the state.
Because I, I would read someplace, you know, what 51 report was you, a child is getting abused in a house or something like that, is what I read?
No, that's a different report.
Maybe you guys are closing down a home or something like that.
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, a discussion? Any other? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
Our next resolution is for the decertification vacation of Meredith Street for the Act 51 report.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion on this motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Our next resolution is for the decertification vacation of Mackinac Street for the Act 51 report.
Is there a motion to adopt? It's been, is there, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
Our final resolution is for the street name change to rename Second Avenue to Roosevelt Austin Avenue for the Act 51.
Is there a motion to-
Some move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this stuff? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is miscellaneous business.
This time, we would, there is an issue concerning the suspension of the council rules of order for the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for May 3, 2019, including the following specific changes: to eliminate council comment to better accommodate the schedule of the anticipated public speakers, and to move public input to the bottom of the agenda and reduce the time limit for such speakers to two minutes in anticipation of the number of speakers. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Is that a date? Is that the wrong date, or is that a different date than this, May 6?
Those are different things. May 6 is the committee of the whole.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, this is the committee of the whole on, as a, as a town hall meeting.
Yep.
Oh.
Clarify.
That is, yeah. But, all right, it's been moved and seconded.
I didn't catch the second.
All right, who, who seconded that?
I seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion at this point? Councilmember Balls?
I don't, I don't mind eliminating the council comments, but if, if the public wanna come in and speak, they can hardly get it out in three minutes. I don't think that we should cut them down to two minutes. They not be able to get nothing. Now, they gonna be able to say their names, and that's gonna be it. So, I don't agree with that. I would make a change of that.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a-
We had a vote on it.
There could be a motion to amend. I mean, that would be the only thing that could be made at this time?
I like a motion that we amended to don't lead the public speaking to the amount of three minutes that they have.
Is there a second for the motion to amend?
I'll support.
All right, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Part of the reason why we went from three minutes to two minutes was because this is going to be a ti- a hot topic. And I understand that, no, they can't get it all in. You can't get it all in in three minutes when you come in front of us now. But what was going to happen is this, we're going to allow them an opportunity to say what they have to say, and the presenters will probably stay around. If not, they'll have numbers to contact. So, that's why we said two, because if we say we get a hundred people, and they all wanna talk, we might be there till seven, eight o'clock at night. So, when we limit, when we just say two minutes, you know, I know, people could go on and on and on about their subject, but at least we're trying. We are willing to go and say, let's have a meeting. Let's sit down, let's talk, let's see how we can fix this. So, that's where the two minutes came from, my colleagues. The two minutes said that if you give people longer time, they got more and more to say. Shorten it up, they'll get to the point, and they'll say what they need to say. I'm not, girl, crazy thing. So, if we shorten it up, if we shorten the timer, they'll say what they wanna say. Okay? Be honest. We do it without three minutes. We, we try to find stuff to say.
It used to be fine.
It used to be fine. I'm just saying.
Is there further discussion?
No, I, I just don't agree with that. I mean, people, that, that's, that's what government is all about, giving people an opportunity to say what they need to say. I mean, 'cause it's obvious the issue is important, 'cause like you said, it's gonna be a lot of people talking on it. Give them the three minutes and have it all done with. If, that, that may be the meaning that we have to stay longer. Yes, a lot of times, we don't wanna be here as long as we be, but sometimes we just gotta bite the bullet and do what we gotta do. We here to serve. And I wanna serve my citizens, with giving them an opportunity to say what they need to say. That's just how I feel about it.
All right. Councilman Millen?
Yes. I realize with our meeting schedule, this is our last opportunity to discuss this, but lacking a better idea of the agenda, I'm not sure what we're preparing for. Are the anticipated public speakers, like two or three with short presentations? What is the anticipated length and breadth of the meeting?
Well, we're gonna have, we're attempting to have, I think, three outside speakers, so I would, I would imagine probably twenty minutes to a half hour per presentation for them, based on their availability. And then, you'll have however many people sign up to speak. We'll take the, sign up in the clerk's office. Give you an idea, I don't think, maybe Councilman Bench was on council when we had the, the medical marijuana passed, but when that passed, we had, I believe, sixty to seventy speakers sign up to talk about that. So, if that's any indication, I would imagine we would have a similar number of people sign up.
So, we're possibly anticipating a total length of the meeting of maybe three hours?
Realistically, yeah. Realistically, I am anticipating longer.
Well, but a minimum, then?
Probably a minimum of three to four.
Depending on the total number of public speakers.
If you have a hundred speakers at two minutes each, you also have to queue up, which takes time. You also have to, there'll be breaks in here. I mean, we have to have some breaks. So, you could easily spend the entire day.
And we won't have, the presenters will be there to present, since it's a committee of the whole meeting, if council members had questions for them, council members could ask, but there won't, won't be an opportunity for interaction with the presenters and the public, anyway, so.
Not during the meeting?
Right, because that's-
After the meeting, that could be possible. Councilmember Ball?
Is there any chance for us to know who the presenters are at a time?
Well, we're still working on, I believe, two of them, because they're from outside groups, so they, one of them is, we were attempting to get a city attorney from another community, but they have to have permission from their council, because it is a business day. And then, we're attempting to get people from DEQ, 'cause there are some wastewater regulations that we wanted to have them present about. And then, the third group, I believe, is from McLaren Health. But I don't know that they're confirmed yet, but we'll get more information as we confirm those.
Just talking about for the recreational marijuana?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a, it's a, it's not, it won't be a town hall. That was the original idea, we're gonna have it as a committee of the whole for public comment.
Are we gonna get more tax revenue out of this, so we get this passed?
Well, that, that's-
I'm just saying, I mean, we talking-
We don't know, all right? That's not the issue in front of the-
Well, it, it may, it may become the issue, because if we try to get more money in the city, and you ain't let people talk about it, and you need to get the place cleaned up, and everything's done, we gotta bring some money in here. We been talking about this all the time.
The-
So, I'm done with it.
Motion is, I, I understand.
I don't wanna argue with you. I just wanna make my point and just leave it at that.
Okay, that, that's, that's good. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Councilman, or Mayor Protem more?
In the next probably week or so, everything we hope to have finalized, so that the council and the community will have a better handle on what it is we're trying to do. We have to make a decision. We want to have the knowledge to make the right decision. I know you said we wanted to move on, but some of these, it's not just we gonna have the negatives. We gonna have some positives, so that people can understand, this is what you got, this is what you gonna get. So, I, I think that it's worthwhile. I think we really need to have it, and I thank, I thank the mayor, 'cause we were riding to Ann Arbor, to Lansing, when I suggested, let's have a town hall, let's talk about this, let's let the people have an opportunity to say. So, I, I do thank you so much for allowing it to happen.
Yep, okay.
I'm just glad that you said that, Brenda, because I was wondering if our speakers are gonna be weighted, so there's both positive and negative. They're gonna be facts.
Strictly facts.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what the city attorney is saying is, we're, we're not planning to have positive or negative speakers. We're having speakers that present factual information.
Right, but you can also have people, presenters and speakers, that are presenting facts in the light of going one way or the other. So, I just wanna make sure it's even across the board.
Well, I mean, I agree that that's the ideal. I don't, we don't know what, exactly what they're gonna say, but the goal is to have simple, straightforward facts. That's our goal, because that's what the public is entitled to. Now, we're not talking about the motion. We have, is there any further discussion on the motion to amend? That's what we're on now.
Just would like the clerk to restate what the amendment is.
Do you want me to read the whole motion?
Well, just the amended amendment right now. That's what we're on. I can restate it. It's simply a motion. The motion was to change the two-minute limit to, that's proposed in the original motion, to a three-minute limit.
The motion to suspend the council rules of order for the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for May 3, 2019, including the following specific changes: to eliminate council comment, to better accommodate the schedule of the anticipated public speakers, and to move public input to the bottom of the, bottom of the agenda and leave the speaking time limit as, as it is.
That is the motion as amended. We're just voting on the amendment right now.
Yeah, well, yeah.
To leave it at three minutes. Okay.
Okay. Does everyone understand the motion? It's to change that three, two-minute proposal to three minutes. Correct?
Correct.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
No, also.
So, roll call.
We need a roll call.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
No.
Mayor Protem?
No.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Millen?
No.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache?
Yes.
And Mayor Clark?
No.
We have five yeses and four no's.
And it carries. Can you restate the original motion as amended?
Motion to suspend the council rules of order for the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for May 3, 2019, including the following specific changes: to eliminate council comment, to better accommodate the schedule of the anticipated public speakers, and to move public input to the bottom of the agenda and have a three-limit, time limit for the speakers.
Is there any further discussion on the motion as amended? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's carried. Okay. Is there any other business to come before the council?
Is there one thing to say?
Yes.
On Monday at 2:30, we're, we will be meeting with the union. Ms. Miller has been gracious to come for, since we did this in 2017. So, we're gonna meet with the union again, just to do an update, to see how everything's going with everybody. So, I just wanted people to know that we do work with our unions. We don't isolate them.
Councilmember Millen?
Yes. We have the Cinco de Mayo parade coming up, and I'm told that the mayor has been invited to participate. He will be riding in a vehicle. I just wanted to sort of get the rest of the council members, see if they had any thoughts about whether we're trying to, is the mayor Protem working at all on this? If we could go through her, if not...
I, I can say all council members are invited.
Yes, we were invited at one time, but we haven't-
There's a cost associated to it.
Wait, I'm doing talking about that.
A walking unit, a riding unit, all that money.
There, there is a cost factor. And, and I'm trying to get a clarity. Is it seventy-five dollar per council person? Seventy-five dollars for all of us?
It's, it's, it's per float, you know?
But we didn't say we was gonna do a float. We do a float in the Chris-
Well, then, yeah, if I'm gonna walk by, you know, Annie, that I'd have to pay my own fee, we, vigilantly, now, if we're gonna walk together, walk.
Well, I'm waiting on Nancy Frome.
Okay.
Please communicate with us when you get some additional information.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will. Then I will make contact with Mike Rucker, to see if we can get the float, 'cause I just can't walk this too far.
Now, you was talking about doing exercise?
I said hitting the tennis ball, the dip, the dead walk.
I would urge all council members to consider it. It'd be nice to have as many of-
I wanna go in the car with you.
Oh.
The free car.
I need to.
I wanna go in the free car.
Well, it's big enough. We all can get in it. All right. Any further, for the good of the order, any, anything else? There'd be a nice motion to-
So moved. Support.
Moved and adjourned. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For, for Mayor Protem?